April 3rd, Town and Dighton Planning Board, semi-monthly meeting, bi-monthly, whatever. Anyway, reminder that this is a plug meeting that is video and audio recorded for posterity, and so we all behave. Please stand in court of allegiance, please.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America. The deliberate public, which stands one nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is to discuss the grading and erosion control plan for ISM Solar Dighton III LLC, Zero Heart Street, Map 21, Lot 4, with Town Engineer Consultant, Peter Williams.
I've been contacted by the, I think, Terry had also the, about change that you needed to make in the approved plan for this project. And your handout is the, actually, the approved layout plan attached to my email. And this is separate from what he's handing out to you right now. Josh, what did you just hand out?
So I just handed out just a full updated packet. I had sent you maybe a couple, a couple snapshots from the packet, which just got updated. So C4 is the page that you probably forwarded to the group.
Yes, it did. So, but in their handout is the current approved plan, not in what Terry gave you. Do you have that plan also up there, Josh?
I have an existing plan, which I was going to start with.
Okay, why don't you start that?
Yeah. This is the, can I grab the floor for a moment? Okay, thanks for having us. Josh Parkus with Borrego Solar. This is our approved plan. We've come through Planning Board and Conservation. And there's a existing right-of-way that comes, it's mainly in a wetland. It's more or less a cart path that kind of exists in some areas and doesn't on the ground when you're actually looking for it. Since we've left you all, we've realized that we cannot move it and overcome it, so we basically need to slide our system, or not, not our system, no touching to the actual system itself, but the fence line and this water management feature. We're proposing to slide about 30 to 35 feet to the east. So you can see there's just a section of it outside of that. And we've basically kept the features the same and just slid the fence line to come right on the outside of that right-of-way or easement. It's referenced as Old Proprietor's Road, so we just basically needed to avoid it. We, we thought this bordered on a potential field change or something that would potentially come up during our building permit application, but we thought, since there was a stormwater management feature that did have to move, we just, we thought while it was fresh in everyone's mind, it might be best to come back and show it to you as a modification. And then the plan sets that I just handed out are basically replacements. This is the only change, and they are stamped by our professional engineer.
Have they actually filed for a minor modification?
For this part?
Yes, for this part.
So we didn't, frankly, we didn't know if it quite met the minor modification. We kind of thought it was bordering on a field change, but we were, we wanted to come in tonight before we applied for a building permit, before it maybe came up a few weeks or a few months from now, from now, when we showed that the plan is slightly different than what was approved. So I, I actually wanted the board's opinion on whether this was technically a minor modification or if it was maybe not quite, quite as much as that.
And basically what they're doing is just moving the detention basin up the slope to avoid the right-of-way.
Have you, what, does that change the calculations at all?
No, I believe you're keeping the basin the same size.
We are. So our, our thought was the basin's the same size within a smaller impacted area, so it should be maybe slightly more than than-
The design is adequate.
Exact, yes, yes.
That's the only question I would have, and whether it's a field change or a minor modification, whether, since it's a gray area, I think we could probably vote on this board whether we should agree it to be, to be a minor, and then vote on accepting it or not. Any questions of the, of the folks in the audience? Other questions of the board? So would anyone like to make a motion to accept this change as a minor modification to the special permit?
I'll make the motion.
I second.
On paper?
Aye.
So the second would be, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the minor modification to the plans?
I'll make a motion to accept it as a minor modification to the plans.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you, dear. Appreciate everyone's time, all over here.
It's a paper box.
Sure. So this is a new stamped set of drawings, which I know we didn't, we haven't provided at times in the past for record, just one. Okay, great.
(inaudible)
And then if I could get a PDF sent to me as well, that would be perfect.
Please see me also. Here's the full size.
Now we have a seven-minute hiatus. What can we fit into seven minutes? Could we fit into obtaining a lateral file cabinet review discussion?
We can, well, what I wanted to propose to you gentlemen, where I'm trying to obtain a couple lateral file cabinets to accommodate our files that are better than what we have in our office right now. So basically, they look like those big ones that are in the back there. Trying to obtain those, but those are already taken.
Oh, nice guy.
Yeah. So I had done some shopping through WB Mason, which we have a state contract, but of course, for one of them, it's around $900 each. So, and I was looking to purchase two. So I did some shopping around, and there's a lot of office companies that sell them, like through Craigslist, but they're, for offices that have gone out of business and then go into this warehouse. And I had already spoken to Mallory, and she said it was fine, but that I had to get, make sure it was okay with you guys, that if you guys are okay if I went down and looked and if I saw a couple that were appropriate for the office, if I went ahead and paid for them, then my husband and I would bring them back to the office and then just being reimbursed. Wouldn't be until the next fiscal year when we have our budget back up for office.
So we, we have the discretionary funds after July 1st?
After July 1st. We may have some at the year end, maybe, give or take. I wouldn't do, really do anything until July 1st anyways, at the very least. But I, more importantly, the ones through WB Mason were around $700 to $900. The ones I was able to find at these office places were around $100 to $150.
Really?
They may have a couple scratches on the side. Quite frankly, I couldn't care less about that. You're not going to see that. And I would make sure it would be in perfect working order to suit the needs. So as long as you guys were okay with that.
Is this a delivered price, or is it, you have to-
My husband and I would be doing it. My husband has a trailer. We would go, there's a place in New Bedford and another one in Fall River, that he has a truck and a trailer.
And you're sure this is okay with, and the town accountant?
I've asked Mallory. I figured I would ask you guys first before I talk to the town accountant.
Right, talk to her.
She's my last one. I figured she'll be my last one that I talk to on that.
Because we would like you to be reimbursed for your money, but-
Of course, of course.
So I would make sure first.
Yes.
The question is, are you going to charge for delivery?
I would not charge. That would, that would be my gift to the Town of Dighton when we go to office. How about that? So, and my husband has been put on notice as well, so he's, he's game on that, so.
Do we have to take a vote?
No, you don't need to vote, just to give you a heads up. And if there was an objection, of course, I would-
Why spend $1,800 when you can spend $180 if it works out?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was looking at. So, yeah. And if you want to take a couple more minutes, I think the other issue we, I have on the agenda is scheduling a public hearing for the zoning bylaws that we have had discussions already. One was the kennel bylaw that we had at our last meeting. So I wrote up the, the bylaw for that, for the warrant. And I also incorporated the language for the solar bylaw that we're looking to do for a better buffer, the setback, or the better buffer from the roadway on the visual. So I've included a draft in there for you guys to review. The other thing I wanted to make note was I added a third bylaw change for the retreat lots because there was a misnumbering. So what it had was the section numbers, one of the section numbers was duplicated, so, and of course, in order to correct that, it has to go to town meeting for a vote, and it has to be approved by the Attorney General, even though it's an administrative error. So that's what that third bylaw changes on that. And if you'll notice, in your packet, there's a, to make it easier for you, there's, it's a redlined presentation of the bylaw changes, so it's easier to read. I think the kennel was pretty straightforward from what Tom presented last time. So I think that's pretty straightforward. I think the only one you might want to pay close attention to is the solar. Make sure that's indeed everything that we talked about and what you wanted to incorporate. We pretty much took the language that was from Rehoboth, because that seemed to be the-
So 4654 is the addition?
465, yes. So again, I had to change, I had to, because of the way it's written, I had to move things around a little bit, which is why it changed a little bit. And then I basically added the screening part under that, so it says that the, all of them will be not visible from the street.
Yep.
And then you'll notice under 4655, I had taken out the part where it says to the maximum extent feasible structures which are visible, because it's kind of a duplicate-
Right.
-from the screening part. So that's why that part was taken out on that.
Good job.
So that's pretty much it.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Regarding the question that came up on that last minor site plan modification that came in, about the indeterminate whether it had to be both a building or only one, I always thought it was the intention of the bylaw to have only one of those be a trigger. That if someone built a building, or if they did the parking, it didn't have to be either. And if that's something the board might want to consider.
Are we talking about solar?
No, I'm talking about solar. I'm on our track.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
You're confusing me.
I'm sorry. And it's a separate item. I don't know if you can consider it in that-
Yeah, so, so our attorney said that if it were less than 2,000 square feet-
Yeah.
-or less than 10 parking, so you could have a, technically, you could have a 40,000 square foot building and nine parking spaces, and it would be a minor-
So that's what I'm suggesting, that you talk to the attorney and see if we can get the language to make that-
Yeah, that's a good idea. I mean, Tom would probably be excited about a 30,000 square foot building in terms of tax revenue, but not the neighbors so much.
No.
Potentially.
Okay.
Do we have time to get that in the, the discussion?
The public hearing has to be on May 15th in order to make it for town meeting, but I can certainly-
I'm sure it's a minor, just a minor change of the verbiage.
Yeah, yeah, so if you could ask Jay.
Ask Jay if I need, okay.
So we don't have to take a vote?
No. I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that on May 15th, we have that public hearing coming up for this, for that. And I wanted to be sure that you guys were all on board for solar. That was my more. You had already voted with the language that you wanted to incorporate, but I just wanted to be sure that you guys saw what was on.
Yeah, I don't think you have to rehash.
No.
All right, thank you.
And now we are back on track.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the residential subdivision, Kenneth Rougeau, Zero Wellington Street, Map 11, Lot 7A, and 8-01. Oh, I think we have to read the public hearing?
Public hearing.
Okay. Illegal notice, Dighton Planning Board, April 3rd, 2019, at 6:15 PM. Town Hall will level conference room in accordance with the provision of Chapter 41, Section 81T, Matt General Laws. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on the application of Kenneth Rougeau for the approval of a residential definitive subdivision plan located at Zero Wellington Street, Dighton being shown as assessors, Map 11, Lot 7A, and 8-01A, containing 13.31 plus or minus acres of land. The applicant proposes a two-lot subdivision located in the residential agricultural district. All interested parties should attend the hearing. Top of the planner available this year. Okay. So I have half a tree in front of me. You have the other half. This is the application, I take it?
Yes.
Is this a plan that was presented to the ZBA and signed by the ZBA?
It's signed by the ZBA. It's been, the variance has been granted on the process.
Most of interest.
I have ZBAs right here, the mileage.
Question is, how long is the, please, ZBA?
ZBAs, they granted them an extension which is in their package, in your package.
Oh, it's the same file, isn't it? Yeah, it is. This one has less detail. So what are we looking at? There's two lots. Time to figure out where they are. Feel like a dunce because it should be more straightforward.
Lot 2.
Lot 1. So this is the lot line?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the lot line, right down the middle of the utilities?
Yes.
Okay, now it's coming clear to me. I couldn't find the darn lot line.
So this lot has only got 1.87 acres. Right. And that's, that's the lot. It's not, this is going to be kept to myself. This is the one that I want to, the farther one away.
So Lot 1 goes all the way-
Right.
-here. Lot 2 doesn't meet our retreat bylaw, but you have variance from the ZBA.
Right.
That's correct.
Basically, it's dropped the land right next to the construction. How long is that extension for?
Do they even expire?
Yes.
Yep.
The problem we had was our engineer dropped dead. He was doing this-
That was a couple of years ago, right?
Yeah.
You should have told him not to.
Unfortunately, we have no say over that matter.
So the date of the decision was a year and a half ago.
Correct, yeah.
And you don't know if it's two years or three years?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Bylaw change in town, it used to be three.
Now you're taking grant from one extension. What is it that we're supposed to do here?
So what is this subdivision application doing that the variance doesn't?
I was told that we had to come in front of the Planning Board after I had received the variance.
You got, my understanding was similar to what we had on the old Somerset Ave and the Tremont Street subdivision that we had, was they were granted the frontage, but they still have to split the lots, so the two-
They were granted the frontage and the setbacks-
And the setbacks.
-because the houses were close to each other, and they wanted to draw the line between the two. And one was five feet from the new lot line, and one was about seven feet from the new lot line. So they-
Correct.
-got the variance for the frontage, they got the variance for the, for the setbacks, the side setbacks. And then it was the matter of them coming before us to get a subdivision approval. Now our subdivision, if we approve anything, we're not grant, granting anyone the right to build or bequeathing a buildable lot on it, as we've discussed in the past. You already have that, that permission from the ZBA.
Correct.
So we are, to some extent, I wouldn't call it a rubber stamp, because we do have our, our consultants making sure that it complies with everything, but it's, you know, it's something that is less of a review than might otherwise take place, I think. But we also have a letter from Peter from March 15th regarding the plans. And Peter, any, you want to go over it, or should I just read them off and you comment? You choose.
Is the applicant going to be able to respond to these, or are we going to proceed on these?
Well, that's a good question. Well, there are some things we can proceed on. Have you had a chance, has your engineers had a chance to look at these?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
Have you looked, have you had a chance to look at them?
Oh, no, I haven't looked at your comments yet, Peter.
Okay.
So that being the case, I think rather than us voting on anything, or-
As for it continues?
Yeah, I think that would be, make the most sense. Any comments from the public?
Guys, one question. It appears that the lots have already been created. They seem to be on the assessors' tax base.
When I got the variance.
So the town created the lots? That's what confused me, because when I looked on the tax maps, I'm looking at the two lots of there.
So the cart was put before the horse, is that what you're saying?
No.
I don't know about the assessors.
Give us, well, me especially, because I'm going to read this, but the timeline since this began and what transpired within that time.
This process started back 2004, '05. We did, originally did an A&R plan on them.
2007, I think I read that the Planning Board approved the plan.
For the A&R.
Okay.
And then we had-
Was it anything like this?
Basically, what it was, was just straight back.
Okay.
And this one, it wasn't a pork chop, but it was, this one had sufficient frontage. They both had equal frontage, and then one lot was here with the upland up here, and then the other one had a larger chunk of the upland. So it was straight, so it conformed, it wasn't a pork chop lot.
All right, so the original one came in through here, and you're going to create a lot here and a lot there.
Yeah. And then when we did all the engineering and the wetlands and stuff, and with Concom, actually, Dighton Conservation Commission is the one that kind of suggested we do it this way. This is what their intent was when they met with the person who was doing the wetlands.
So other than the cost, yeah, the wood cost, probably going to cost you quite a bit of money for this one, too.
It has.
You could have built one here and here. You can say on the A&R plan, and that's, you're still only asking for two.
Right, that's all.
Well, it wasn't an A&R plan.
Oh, no?
No, because it doesn't have frontage, so it-
It did over here originally.
Oh, the original one? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to understand what happened. I know there was a couple of zoning board hearings, a couple of, and then came back to the Planning Board prior, so if, I'm sorry, but if you would just continue, for me, anyway.
Mm-hmm.
What happened after?
We got our variance, we came back to the ZBA, got our-
With this plant.
Well, actually, we went through Conservation. This is what Conservation wanted. ZBA at first was a little reluctant, and then they had conversed, their consultant had conversed with the Concom's consultant, and they both came up, well, you know, this would be the best solution, because it'd have the minimal amount of impact on what language. You can see this is really, rather than trashing all this property-
Yeah, this is all there is, yeah.
Yeah.
So you couldn't have kept that same line and had a driveway easement for this lot?
That's, that gets messy.
Okay.
It gets messy legally, this way here. Everybody has their own.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I've had neighbors who have shit driveway and it didn't work out so well.
That doesn't work out well.
See, I'm starting to understand why this was created in lieu of a different option.
Right.
Okay. So you've been through the ZBA, twice, Planning Board twice, and this is the final, 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 hopefully.
So I think that the right thing to do is to, to continue it so that you can respond to our consultant, or your engineer can respond to our engineer's letter. And if there are any waivers that you seek, that would be the, between now and the next meeting, make the request per the, per the letter.
All right.
Lot of questions.
This is the copy of my letter.
All right, thanks, I hadn't gotten it.
Did you get that one from Todd, over to board of health?
No.
No.
His comments, can you get them?
I can, yeah.
Comments?
Sure.
And I believe the Conservation Commission has asked for a new NOI, because that one's expired. Just slipped in the hole.
Okay.
Okay.
The, the order of conditions is expired?
Yeah.
They, oh, so you didn't request an extension?
That's Charlie's letter's in there somewhere.
Okay. Here's the order of conditions. Yep, amended order of conditions for this part is expired, notice of intent prior to any construction.
Oh, this was supposed to handle that?
Oh, well.
Yeah. Okay, no problem, so we'll just get that taken.
Yeah, you know, it'd be nice to address everybody's concern before you go any further into spending money, I would think, you know.
All right, thank you.
So do you want a month or two weeks?
Do we have any about this?
Is that, I already asked you.
I'm sorry.
I did.
All right. Two weeks is-
This is the third, so it would be the 17th, or the-
Yeah, I got to do a month.
Okay.
To get everybody.
Sorry, I forgot my camera. So it'll be May 1st.
May 1st, so would anyone like to make, would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to continue this hearing until May 1st. Seven.
On paper?
Aye.
Thank you.
What time is it? What time is the hearing?
If they can watch.
Thank you.
Is there a time on this, on the next item on the agenda?
If you can, go ahead.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the continuance of the public hearing, two of them. One for special permits for John DeValley, Zero, Matt, Zero, Five, Dash, Nineteen- One for special permits for John DeValley, zero map, zero five dash nineteen Maple Street, map one lot four, zero Oak Street, oh four dash nineteen, map six lot six and map six lot seven. And the other continuance is for form A applications for John DeValley, zero Maple Street, map one lot four, zero eight Oak Street, map six lot six and map six lot seven. That's a multiple.
Do you have last plans for it?
Sorry, it may.
Which one are we starting with?
We are starting with the first one that I mentioned, zero Maple Street, map one lot four for the special permit. That would be the retreat lot. Well, might make more sense to talk to him, to discuss them.
This one's not going to be a retreat lot anymore.
Oh, okay. This is-
All four maids, huh?
All four maids.
Yep. Mr. Shaw agreed to extend this line down, so we now have more than two hundred feet of frontage here. And this lot already had frontage on this side. Peter hadn't noticed it to this-
So it's hundred thirty-one and forty?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Oh, hundred sixty-two here, okay.
Yeah, plus a hundred thirty-one, plus four.
Plus forty. But it has to be one seventy-five contiguous, you're well in there.
Yeah.
Two fifty, two fifty.
This area is two fifty, no water in that area.
But it's, it's, it's close to three hundred.
It's two fifty, right?
Yeah, it is two fifty, yeah. But it's got more than two fifty. And the original star, four M A, if you didn't see it.
This is not supposed to be a retreat lot, right?
No, neither of them are retreat lots anymore.
So this is two fifty? One sixty-two, one ninety-three.
So two ninety.
And forty, that's two thirty. Two thirty, continues.
That's two ninety, right? One sixty plus one thirty is two ninety.
I was only adding thirty-two. No, I was only adding thirty-two.
So, uh-
The major problem we had with this on the, the retreat lots is it was not all in one district.
Well, it was in recreation.
Right, it was recreation, private, residential.
So now you have four lots which may or may not have four buildable areas outside of the wellings. And, uh, so in terms of, of our review, it's, does it comply to our, uh, our bylaws? Peter, have you had a chance to review the, these?
Uh, not thoroughly, no.
Well, we've also-
Well, it's an A and R.
Yeah, there's no real need, but you're here, so. So it seems that, that our review, we've reviewed many A and R lots in the past and in no case did we require an engineer to review them. We confirmed that they met our zoning bylaws and we approved them. A and R means approval not required. So in this case, we're essentially endorsing what we don't need to endorse. I'm a, I've never understood the legalities of that, but I think it's a matter of, of timing, of the time that you have to wait if it's not stamped, I don't even remember.
It's essentially a determination effect.
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days, yeah. Would any of you like to look at these plans?
I, I would.
These were not available until just now, is that right?
What's that?
These have just become available right now. This is not what you had available.
These are revised.
Four four M A lots with appropriate frontage.
So according to the Condyton bylaws, a lot has to be a certain size and have a certain amount of frontage. It has to have two hundred feet, two hundred and fifty feet of frontage and be forty, with no water, forty-five thousand square feet?
Not a retreat lot.
Forty-six thousand.
Forty-six thousand. And so this lot is nineteen, sixteen, I can't read upside down, sixteen almost seventeen acres and has the required frontage. So lot two complies. Lot three is one point, that doesn't matter. We can-
A lot can be-
A lot can be water, that doesn't make it buildable. So when we, when we vote on this, we are not making any, any judgment or approval. Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to explain, but I have a loud voice, it's a little bit of a strike. And so lot three also complies. Two hundred and fifty feet of frontage, one point two acres. Lot one, two hundred ninety feet of frontage. Uh, was it nine? Third acres? Four, twenty-two acres? And lots of frontage. So- Yeah, I'm not sure why they do that. They, they, that may be the case. The driveway-
There's a cart path.
Oh, there's a cart path.
But the buildable upland needs to be-
One here.
One acre.
Yeah, because the wetlands are here. So again-
Well, you got a buffer zone, so where's your septic?
We can't discuss that on this one. This is not a retreat lot.
This one-
We're looking at right now.
Where's the septic for this guy?
Well, this one may not even be, they're gonna-
Come to the next one. Just asking a question.
So that's a lot bigger than it looks.
This is right here.
Sorry.
Yeah, but, I mean, I don't know how the town falls in there putting septic in a buffer zone.
No, no, but this is-
You can go within fifty.
Here's the buffer zone here.
So what lands?
Hundred feet, so. No, again, that's not really our purview.
Right, okay.
The building inspector, if, if they went before the, to the building inspector before going before the Conservation Commission, the building inspector, if he was doing his job, would say, you ought to go to the Concom or, let me, let me check with the Concom. And then they would look at similar, the plans and say, well, he's out of the buffer zone, I don't know where he is. And again, here's the hundred feet, so you get your driveway here, your septic here, your house here. And then this could be driveway here, your septic here. No.
The mosquitoes is the only thing.
Oh, oh, yeah. You get about a month before the septic. But I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how-
Yeah, again, that's really-
How everything plays into this.
It, it doesn't really, again, we're not conveying buildability. And I know that not so much indictment, but towns that are, like metro west towns, those towns are building on crazy lots. So developers, developers, my point is developers can get very crazy without they can read the, the definite.
This is different. Yeah, we don't deny that.
So you can put one there now, split it, put another one here on a retreat lot. If they're going out. But that is a potential. Right now, there's a reason for forty feet.
Because there is a lot of acreage of upland on access.
You could put this up, maybe another forty feet on the front.
There's the same one, right?
Yeah, it's a, it's a-
That's already on the viewer.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would suggest that the applicant, before you make any motion on the, on the form A, that they have to withdraw their retreat lot application. If they formally file.
Right.
I'd like to withdraw our retreat lot application.
Do we need something in writing?
For-
To withdraw the-
For the one on Maple Swamp.
We should get it in writing, but, you know, in the future, good as, good as word right now, we're on T V, so.
But we're just asking to do that.
Yeah, if you could just put something in writing.
Okay.
I was wondering, so the other-
The other, we'll be looking at those after we-
Okay. Close on this one.
Close on the discussion with this.
Um, I did have one question, is the town now, will it withdraw? Or is it considered private?
I don't know.
Because when we built our house, that was, that was-
Yeah, yeah, I remember when it-
Kind of improved it.
I remember when it ended.
And I think the town probably plows it, but-
If you're not paying for plowing, the town is plowing it.
I'm not on it.
Oh, you're not on it, okay, sorry.
I'm not on it.
Oh, okay, okay.
But I'm just saying, the town's responsibility and all that stuff.
I know that, well, I know that the town has since paved it, didn't, wasn't that the town?
That was, that was-
We did, we did some, uh, we widened the road up there.
Yeah, I remember did something.
Most of it was-
Run around the curve and then help.
Yeah, still a little.
If we would have asked that question earlier, we could have found out before the meeting, but I'm not sure either, whether it's-
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just kind of curious and, you know, this, this pavement that's in here is kind of an unusual mix. Do we do it like that? And so when building starts to happen, it will-
Does this, the originals have one lot for retreat lot? Was that the original plan?
Yes.
So here's the mile arc for that, if you guys are going to move forward. I need a formal motion on his withdrawal. He had his letter of withdrawal on the retreat lot for Maple Swamp, so we're all set with that.
So would anyone like to make a-
Read it?
Oh, thank you.
So he's, Mr. Peruzzi?
Yes.
Um, has directed to the planning board, he would like to request to remove map one lot four of Maple Swamp Road from, request to remove from the retreat lot request, map one lot four of Maple Swamp Road.
Motion to accept, please, with withdrawal.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Posed? Uh, so any other questions about this plan as, as drawn?
Point about, please, the gentleman here, you're Mr. Free, you're the engineer on the project, right? You're not the actual applicant, the numbers of the law that he's been following.
Don't answer very, I think, from what multiple threats.
So would anyone like to make a motion to approve the plan as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the plan as presented.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
There you have it, so we can start signing it now, correct?
For Maple Swamp, yes.
We have to sign how many paper copies? Three paper copies, we can sign that one, this one, and this one. And I'll put this one further, you can sign that one too and then pass the papers. He's in Florida.
Oh, you're expensive. No?
Four on this one? Let's just finish the signature for us, remember the evening. Okay, so all are signed, sealed, ready and well. So now we're continuing the, the special permit cycle, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I have revised, uh, special permit plans, further request from Mr. Williams. We separated into B A and R and a special permit plan. Uh, special permit plan stands alone, it's not reportable. And I've blown it up, opened it up here. It was, it was now, it's a fifty, it was a sixty scale before. Get a little bit more detail.
Blown two lots of off.
I'm glad to meet all of Peter's comments. Uh, we want to tell this one, come around, uh, highway, hundred, one, those are the area of the lot.
What, uh, what stream is over here?
Uh, I don't, I mean-
Because I, I see mean annual high water line, I'm thinking it's, uh-
Riverfront area.
Yeah, yes.
Um, I think it's just because it floods, you know, the water goes up and down seasonally. So I think it's considered a river.
That's an A and R lot.
Only a river when it rains. Right.
It's a swampy swamp instead of just a swamp.
A river all the time.
Do you guys have a second for this?
Um, no, I'm, I'm spraying my lips too.
It's also submitted a special permit plan that shows some additional graying.
You guys want to shoot it? Yep. Go ahead and pass it around, we're still, we're still looking at it.
This is the special permit segment.
This is the special permit segment.
It shows some additional graying that takes, you know, only a little bit of water going out on the street, probably not more than if there are, the roads can be slow. You're going to alter the road?
No.
They're driving, oh, they're driving.
Uh, those are just four maids, they're not special permit.
What, you're saying the land on this side?
The land that's part of this park is, there's, there's a large lot here and a large lot this way. Right, and then there are other large lots.
This is the requirement.
That was-
Is six.
Only these two lots are special permits.
This, this, this and this are approval not required lots, they're four M A lots. These two lots are, require special permit.
Are you intending for these to be-
That buildable area includes a lot.
Is this the only town that can do? Alter, built on, adding to the house, driveway, septic system?
Eight acres and then this one acre of other.
Actually, they could build anywhere.
Well, actually, yeah.
Well, when it says hundred by hundred, then what's that?
According to our bylaw. According to our bylaw, the applicant has to show a one hundred by, some hundred square feet layer. So if this.
So he has more than that.
Yeah, he has more, so, actually, he could go to, before the Conservation Commission, and submit a notice of intent to extend into that riverfront area. Would they get it or not? They could do, and the same goes for this one. So the potential buildable area is a lot bigger than that, that square.
That's what was one of my questions, was is that a restriction?
No, it's just a, it's just a matter of they have to show that to make it, it be a lot that can be approved.
So it, just as a matter of song, then he has to withdraw this plan that he said the first time, cause it shows.
Looking at it the other way.
I'm looking at it this way.
Look at it from this way.
I understand, but what's the problem?
So if these lots are not shown on that?
Yes, these lots.
Retreat lots coming in from here. And you've got front of here, where's the building gonna go?
No, this is, this is, but these aren't retreat lots, is that?
I'm all aware, but my question is, you've got entrance.
These fell off the draw.
He has a note on the drawing that states that all the lots three and four.
So, when you submit for a special permit, you can also submit for revisions.
But you know it isn't.
This is the revisions.
Okay.
Seven, note seven on the side.
Basically, what you're doing is you're, you're gonna gain access to these lots from here.
Yes, yes, but our frontage is over there. You would consider the other.
I've gone through this, I've gone through this in the past, and I was denied because of that reason.
Cause that's the old plan.
No, we still have a, we still have, we have a special permit plan, and then we have the retreat lot plan.
Okay.
Two plans running here.
So this is.
As the bylaw requires.
Okay. This is what we just started looking at, but now you're looking at something else.
Yeah, I know. Two conversations.
So, this goes, this and this are the same, yeah?
Yes.
And this is what you're looking at. Yeah?
Yeah.
And that.
I just thought it would have a note.
So this. But they both say drawing number one.
Yeah, this should be a drawing.
Well, this is a special permit.
Right.
This is approval not required.
Okay.
Totally different plans.
So this plan is for three and four. Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are the only special permits.
And this, so, this is gonna be part three, is what you're saying. You've been through part one.
Okay.
Yes, those four lots, however many lots, that we've just signed them up.
Right, on the other side of Maple.
Yes. So those are part one.
Yep, yep.
This is part two. We're talking about the special per, hello, everyone, we're talking about the special permit retreat lot. Put all that other stuff away if you haven't already.
Okay, okay, but it still has to be.
We're gonna get to that. We're, we're in part two of a three-part process.
Right.
Part two is the retreat lots. Because you guys are looking at something, and we're looking at something else, and we're getting questions on this and questions on that, and it's just not working. So, any questions about the special permit site plan, which is to discuss lot three and four of this plan?
Which are the retreat lots.
Which are the retreat lots. Peter comments on those particular lots.
He's addressed basically all my comments. Most of the, most of the driveways drive away from this, the street, only a small portion in there, and they appear to be graded so that they, you know, they're gonna be grading off onto the side areas.
Are the requirements met for the square footage of buildable area?
Yes, that is part of Peter's review.
Are they, uh, thirty thousand square feet?
A lot bigger than that.
Well, a hundred by a hundred doesn't, doesn't, that's upland, up, upland area.
Lot four has eighty, almost eighty-six thousand, and lot.
No, 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 you need so much square footage for buildable upland area.
Correct.
Yes, my question is.
He just said.
All right, I'm sorry, say it again.
It's eighty, almost eighty-six thousand square feet of upland.
On lot?
On four.
On lot?
Four. And on lot three, there's approximately a hundred and forty-five thousand square feet contiguous.
Now that's from the wetlands up.
Upland.
Upland.
Upland, so that's not wetland.
Correct. Does that include the driveway?
It doesn't matter.
But that's not buildable. This is the buildable area.
That's the entrance?
Yeah.
They have more than what's required by our.
You're, you're using different.
All right, no, I'm trying to understand it, is what I'm trying to do.
The, the one hundred by one hundred is a requirement for the special permit, you just have to show that it's a hundred by a hundred.
In, in the back here, there's a little upland, so that's included.
Well, it has to be contiguous, so that's, that's separate, so we can include that.
See it right here, contiguous upland, eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixteen square feet. This one here contiguous upland area, a hundred and forty-five thousand square feet.
But the definition of upland does not mean the definition of buildable, so the driveway is upland, although it's a very small, small part of it.
Well, I thought in the town bylaw, you needed thirty thousand square feet of deemed buildable land for retreat lot.
They have, they have more than that.
Not if you include the driveway, cause you can't build on it. So I'm confused by this.
They, they, the bylaw says upland, not buildable land, upland. You have to have thirty thousand of upland.
All right. And how about the fire chief, has, you look at these plans, is there a place to turn around? Which is, it says turnaround area, but.
Yeah, it'll be in my driveway across the street.
Yeah.
Has, uh.
I haven't received anything from the fire chief as of yet.
I just, I needed somebody to clarify that for me.
Yeah, that does a good. Turnaround don't look big enough on the plan, but.
What they're considering upland and buildable.
They have the a hundred by a hundred area.
It was a fifty scale, it's twenty foot.
Right, but I didn't read that in the town bylaws, that's why I'm confused by it.
He's gotta turn around a fire truck up there.
This is the requirement that we need to know how many square feet.
He needs quite a bit of space up there to turn around.
Has the fire chief received?
Whether they put the house here or here.
He has.
Well, they can't put it between here.
From him as of yet.
Here.
Why?
Cause this whole thing is wetlands.
I emailed him tomorrow.
This whole thing is wetlands. The whole property.
What was that again?
Uh, he's just saying that this whole area here is wetlands, this is wetlands, but this is not, and that's what they're.
Our review is complete. It meets the requirement. But our review also, our vote also requires that the fire chief have a, can weigh in. The fire chief has not weighed in, so until he does, I am most comfortable continuing this. Because I, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna have a vote and then have to, have you come back before us because the fire chief has a different idea of what works for him.
Don't, don't get me wrong, I just wanted to understand this.
No, I understand, I understand.
I know the property, I know what's out there, um, and I'm trying to understand how you deem what is upland or buildable, and it seems like the buildable is included with the driveway as upland, but the driveway's not buildable, so it confuses me.
You're, you're confusing upland with buildable. Upland is the requirement, one hundred by one hundred is a requirement. They both are in here.
So it doesn't matter if it's a driveway or anything, as long as you beat that.
Forget about the driveway, forget about the driveway. One hundred by one hundred, it's right here, it's also right here.
Mm-hmm.
The, the upland, not the driveway, is right here. So the upland is part of the driveway, but the driveway doesn't have to be part of the one hundred by one hundred buildable area, if you follow me.
I, I hear what you're saying.
So.
That's not the way I read it in the town bylaw, but, okay, you've explained it to me.
Well, I think also, just to help reassure you a little bit, if you multiplied out the area of the, that strip there and subtracted, it's roughly ten thousand square feet, if you subtracted it from the hundred and forty-five thousand plus square feet, you still have way more than.
Way more than a quarter.
No, I understand that, but you can't build on the driveway.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm just saying.
That's what I was, that was my question.
I, I think the whole purpose of the one hundred by one hundred square is just to make sure that you don't have a ten-foot wide upland that's, you know, four hundred feet long, say, oh, there, I've got my area.
Understood.
It, it has to be a hundred by a hundred, so you've got a reasonable shape, but we've got more than that anyways.
Right.
Considerably.
The square is just kind of an exercise to prove that, that we meet the requirement.
Yep.
But again, without the fire chief weighing in, my preference is to continue.
I'm not against any of this, I just wanna understand.
Well, like you, I want it to be done right, so that the next guy can't come in and say, hey, wait a minute, you let them get away with it.
I, I live across the street, I required two hundred and fifty feet of frontage to build in nineteen ninety, and that's what I did.
Mm-hmm.
And, and quiet on this property years ago, and deemed it wasn't feasible to pay the money to get five lots, and now I see it's changed, so I just wanna understand it. And I know things have changed.
But just understand that we some time ago changed and allowed that people could put in the retreat lots.
Correct, and that's why I've never heard of that.
It was just, um, till we came up to this.
Couple of years, couple of years.
Yep, yep.
I was just reading through the bylaw, there's nothing in there about the fire chief. It just says, uh, has to have a method of reversing direction of a vehicle as approved by the planning board. It doesn't mention the fire chief.
I think in the bylaw, there's a footage, after so many footage, uh, so many feet.
Well, that's right.
It needs a hammerhead.
Greater than a hundred, you have to have a hammerhead to reverse the direction of the vehicle, but it doesn't mention fire trucks or the fire chief.
Well, that's the reason.
Well, you don't want people backing out on the road.
But in the past, we have had, every other one of these retreat lots, the fire chief has weighed in.
Does it say if it's more than a hundred feet deep?
It's, it says if it's more than a hundred feet, you have to have a hammerhead or other method of reversing direction.
You, you don't show that either?
Yeah, it does.
Yes, it does.
The turnaround, the shovel, is a hammerhead.
That's the definition of a hammerhead, or, one's a hammerhead and one's a different type of hammerhead.
The retreats are here.
Would you say it was nine by twenty-five?
How many feet of frontage?
I think, I'm not, way too small. A standard parking space.
Sorry, can't even get into that.
We've got a fire truck. I, I think being a special permit, the board has some flexibility.
Yeah.
It hasn't approved by the planning board, maybe as, you know, they feel comfortable approving, and I think their wish is that you contact and work this out, make sure it's okay with the fire. Could you note one seventy-five here? It's one seventy-five, right?
Yes.
Well, you got a back dimension, but nothing in the front dimension.
Um, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure it's on the Form A plan, just, uh, ended up on the wrong layer for the special permit plan.
Yeah, I, I would, I would move to continue this until. Uh, and I, may I make one comment? Can we talk about the Form A plan that he has submitted? And if the board feels that's confusing, that was one of my recommendations, that he not put all the other Form A plans on the retreat lot plan? Does the board have opinion on that? I kinda felt that way, that it should be separate plans for the retreat lot, separate for the Form A. So. Just have three and four on one A and R plan, and then the other.
Yes, have a, have a, a plan with this three and four.
Okay.
So that, uh.
For the A and R.
For the, yeah.
So that the, well, for instance, if three and four were on one set of plans, and one, two, five, six, and the others were on another set of plans, then we could vote on that other set of plans without any confusion. But now we have this set of plans that we are continuing, but we're sorta not continuing because one, two, five, and six are on that set. Are you confused yet? Well, that's my point.
This is, I don't know what this difference makes, but when I went out there, I looked at the, at lot numbers, like lot number, you know, four fourteen and like that, on the stakes, and yet this house here is like seven hundred.
Uh, those are point numbers, those are for the developer, and he's got a worksheet with the, the point numbers for each state. So, you know, there's a point number for state here.
It's the surveyor, right? The surveyor.
Yeah.
It's, those are surveyor stakes with, you know, locations that they use, and he puts points on it.
References, points, yeah, right.
Yeah, it just sounded like a lot number, like your host number, cause it.
It's just a three-digit number in parentheses, it doesn't say lot number or anything.
It does say lot number on there.
Uh, no, it says lot corner, and then it has the number in parentheses.
But, the discussion is, is about this, not, not numbers on post.
Yeah.
Someone started to make a motion?
I did.
Second.
What was the motion?
Started to make a motion.
Well, to continue this, uh, the future meeting, uh, date unknown here.
Do we want it to our next schedule?
You should be able to do this in two weeks, easy, right?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, whatever that day.
April seventeenth.
April seventeenth. You seconded it already?
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
It's kinda like the Conservation Commission, they have to have a plan where they can show all the details, but in the A and R plan, they have the requirements of the registry, the pipe can only be so small, so that's why you want a separate plan so they can show more detail, and it doesn't have to meet the register requirements, so the A and R plan will meet the recording requirements of the registry.
Yeah, that was getting confusing there. Of the pork chops. Anyway, uh, next item on the agenda, BWC Greenbrook LLC, care of Blue Wave Solar Preliminary Site Plan Special Permit Review, nine oh three Tremont Street, map eight block twenty-seven. Is there a public hearing notice to be read?
No, not yet, their public, their official public hearing is at our next scheduled meeting, this is just preliminary informal discussion.
Okay.
That's great. Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm gonna just hand out a little bit of this presentation to guide the discussion.
We're gonna say, the meeting is on the twenty-seventh, I'm gonna go, wait a second.
Can we wait for, for Thomas to get back? Before starting?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks again for making a spot for us on tonight's agenda, so, I'm Drew Pearson, uh, here with Blue Wave Solar, Director of Project Development, I know John Mancini, manager for our group at Blue Wave Solar as well, and, and our engineer Rich Riccio at Field Engineering. Hope to take tonight just to introduce you to Blue Wave, who we are, what we're about, give you an overview of the project, and just a little bit of the history of, of our development process to date, so that there's some context for our first public hearing on the seventeenth. So last night, we held a community meeting with all of the butters to the project at the old town hall. Heard, you know, a good number of questions, fielded, you know, some good discussion, heard some of their concerns, and, and are working, you know, now to address some of those, which we will.
That was last night, at Old Town Hall?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's something that we do with, with every project, we hold a.
Why didn't we know about that?
Well, it's a voluntary community meeting that we, we, we.
I lived pretty close to that. I live pretty close to that. You know, I'm not in a direct butter, but I, I live pretty close.
We, we emailed all the, the Butters and the Butters list.
Oh, wow.
To the project, yeah.
A three-hundred-foot list that we got for the, for the planning board is what they used for the invitations.
But fortunately, we're gonna go over the same presentation that we went through with the Butters last night, and, um, you know, can at least, give you a sense of what that conversation was like. So, just a little bit about, uh, Blue Wave. Um, we've been around since two thousand and ten, um, we were originally founded by, uh, John De Villers and, and Eric Rager Lopez. Uh, John De Villers, uh, was the former EPA Director for New England, so a long history of, of doing, uh, you know, environmental policy work here in the region. Um, and so, you're kind of from the beginning, you know, our company was founded, um, you know, with, with an ethos to do, to do good, um, you know, environmental work, social work, and, uh, and, and work economically for the communities that we're in. So, Blue Wave started actually as a, uh, it was a brownfield consultant, you know, redevelopment consultancy, and then in two thousand and ten, transitioned into solar development. We've actually, you know, done a few, few projects down in, in New Bedford, I don't know if you're familiar with the Sullivan's Ledge, uh, project, that was an old superfund site, one of Blue Wave's first projects, we redeveloped a highly contaminated site, and, uh, I think at the time, New Bedford had the most solar of any cities, the Mississippi, uh, Union Park, you know, took to our work there. So, uh, moving forward in two thousand and thirteen, we launched a community solar business, um, to open up access, uh, for regular, you know, homeowners, renters, small businesses, et cetera, uh, you know, so that they could participate in, you know, electricity savings generated by our projects. Uh, but more broadly, we've, you know, had a long history of selling, uh, you know, electricity, um, to, you know, any combination of, of towns, school districts, housing authorities, you know, low-income properties, et cetera. So, you know, that kind of collaborative approach is, is something that we've done from the very beginning, and for every project is something that we always kind of approach, uh, you know, with, with at the front of our minds. Two thousand and fifteen, we launched a business promoting, um, just individual, uh, solar, uh, ownership through a lending business, where we would, uh, partner with financial institutions to, uh, to, to lend against, um, uh, residential solar systems. And then in two thousand and seventeen, uh, we achieved, uh, what's called, uh, B Corp certification, um, which is somewhat of a stamp to just demonstrate that your companies adhere to specific principles, uh, environmental, social, uh, et cetera, um, just to, to demonstrate that, you know, we're, we're committed to the people in places where we do business. Can I ask a question? Can we ask questions as we go along? Oh, definitely. Yeah. Okay, the B Corp certification, who does that certification? That's, it's actually a great question that, I mean, I know that that is, I couldn't tell you the, the name of the organization, but, you know, B Corp certification, there's, you know, a few hundred companies, and be happy to provide more information if that was of interest, but.
Yeah, Patagonia is, is, is B Corp, uh, corporation as well. And really, it's a, you're making a commitment to be able to do, you know, it's, it's more the environment and stewardship over a problem.
I can Google it.
Yeah, it's, it is, there's somebody else in our office that took care of it, but it is a question.
Yeah.
For the backup.
Um, but kind of to that point, you know, we do just have a set of values that we, you know, strive to adhere to, every project that we do, um, just, uh, you know, by doing projects, you know, well, and doing it right, um, you know, and working in a collaborative, you know, sort of, uh, uh, a way, you know, with, with integrity and transparency, you know, and everything that we do, so, you know, at the community meeting last night, you know, with every project, we sit down and, and we really try to get, you know, take, take a proactive, um, you know, sort of approach in, in, uh, you know, letting the Butters, um, you know, sort of help us make the best project, uh, that we, that we can, and again, that's our attitude, is coming before you, um, with this, you know, information session. So, yeah, so to sum up, we have three businesses, just, you know, the solar development, community solar, so we do asset management as well for community solar customers, and, uh, home solar loans. So we've developed about a hundred and thirty megawatts in Ma- in Massachusetts, uh, executed about thirty power purchase agreements. Um, we were selected by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council in Greater Boston to, uh, be the preferred solar developer for a lot of the towns within MAPC. And, you know, as you can see in, you know, some of the presentation, uh, in, or in this slide, that, you know, made a big economic impact over the course of our, of our tenure. So this project, uh, you know, this is gonna be a, a project proposed under the, the SMART program, which I don't know if you're familiar with.
I've been reading a little about it.
Okay, yeah, so it's, it's been active now for around two months, three months, uh, something to that effect, and, um, within the SMART program, there's a unique carve-out, uh, for what is a, a new development class in solar, which is an agricultural canopy. So it's, it's in response to this idea that, you know, solar has been developed on prime farmland, you know, and in many cases improperly, you know, depending on your perspective, but, you know, the reality is that, you know, traditional solar will take farmland out of production for twenty to thirty years. Whereas with this new approach, you know, the solar is designed to be high enough off the ground to allow room for people and equipment. It's spaced sufficiently to allow enough sunlight, and then the design is actually held to a pretty high degree of, of criteria and standards, uh, under the SMART program to demonstrate that, you know, there's enough sunlight for crops, that there's a business plan for farming, that you have a farmer selected, that you have a crop plan, uh, and, uh, you know, our, um, our, our position within the dual-use part of, of, of SMART actually depends on there being farming every year for the life of the project. So for the full twenty years, we have to demonstrate that the farming is active, uh, in order for us to maintain that status within, within SMART. So, we're working with, uh, Jim Cabral, um, some of, you may, may know Jim, I know he's been, and his family, a, a, a very, you know, kind of longstanding, you know, citizen in town, um, so Jim's been, you know, farming squash for the last thirty or thirty-five years, he's ready to retire, uh, but, you know, being that this land is near and dear to him and, and his family, he wants to see it stay as, as agriculture. But, you know, our arrangement with Jim is, is also, you know, such that it's, it's helping him to ease out of doing the direct farm, you know, farming, and, and, uh, you know, enter into the next, uh, phase, phase of his life and, you know, with him and his family. So, you know, the idea here with this project and more broadly is that, you know, there's really a variety of, of agricultural uses that, you know, could, could be done underneath the array. You know, for us, we've, this is now the second dual-use project that we're permitting. Uh, we permitted one in, in Grafton, Massachusetts, which was actually a, kind of a similar size to this, but it was divided into two arrays. And for that project, um, there's about a twelve-acre array that will host rotational grazing, uh, for, for livestock, and we've worked with soil scientists from NRCS, you know, to really think, uh, you know, with, with, uh, with more attention and focus on how can we actually manage and, and steward the land, uh, to the best that we can, you know, uh, through, through this livestock stock operation. Uh, and then with the, the other array, uh, we're working with a pair of vegetable growers, uh, for, for a vegetable cultivation, uh, you know, operation. So we're really excited about, um, you know, just kind of showing that solar can be done differently. And, you know, we're, we're drawing, you know, lessons from that project, and, and also, you know, exploring, you know, new approaches with Jim, you being that this site, you know, has historically, uh, you've been farming squash for the last thirty-some years. So, the, the basic idea is that we would continue to farm squash, and we're talking with local farmers now who are probably around more my age. Um, you know, nothing's been set in stone, but people who have shown initial interest in, in actually, uh, kind of inheriting the farming operation of the land as Jim transitions out and into retirement. So we're, we're really excited about the fact that not only will this land not be developed for housing, or even permanently taken out, but it will stay in active agriculture and, and, and might even provide the opportunity for new farmers to get into the business. The design that you're looking at, um, is a little unique in that it's, it's oriented southeast, uh, there is some spacing between, uh, panels, it's every third panel. And the idea there, uh, is that we're allowing, um, by not having a true south orientation, more diffuse sunlight between the rows. Uh, and then by having panels removed, you can also allow direct sunlight, uh, you know, in, into the site as well, so. So this is one design that, you know, we've been, been contemplating, it's one that we currently have, um, you know, there are a variety of ways to, uh, to approach this, and this is one. But, you know, we're, we're, uh, you know, excited about, um, you know, moving forward, uh, as this, this is the, the design that we permitted in Grafton and, and are, under, uh, you know, comfortable with. So we recognize that New Titans, you know, historically an agricultural community, um, you know, and just kind of taken a step back and, you know, and realizing that, you know, you've got, uh, you know, the agricultural high school just down the road, and, um, you know, the, the town itself is, it's a very pretty town, it's very, you know, bucolic. We, we really want to, you know, design this project in such a way as to respect that, that character, which, um, you know, we will get to, you know, here in a few slides, talking about, you know, the visual screening strategy that we've proposed, which is probably a little different than what you might be used to seeing, uh, for other solar projects. But just more broadly on, uh, on, on our kind of history with dual-use, uh, you know, our, our company, uh, early on won a grant, um, through the Department of Agriculture uh, to pilot a, a, uh, early-stage dual-use project. So in Grafton, um, that, you know, awarding of the grant, um, that, we, we, to do so, basically, uh, kind of created a, a methodology in-house to simulate the amount of sunlight per square foot that a given solar design would, would create, or, you know, would allow for over the course of a year or a growing season. And, you know, we looked around, we saw that a lot of solar, uh, shade and design software didn't quite get to that level of, of, of specificity that the state wanted us to get to. So, you know, in kind of creating that methodology at, at that early, you know, kind of, um, point in time, to fast forward, uh, we, we took that, and we actually won another grant to create, uh, open-source, um, piece of software that anyone online can access to design these projects and understand what the shade implications of a given solar design might be for a farming strategy, and that's the, uh, you know, uh, you know, piece of software that, uh, is, is currently being used by the state to review and approve, uh, you know, these types of solar projects. So, yeah, just to give you a sense of, of what the project in Grafton looks like, we provided a few visualizations, um, and, uh, yeah, just encourage you to, you know, take that in and, and, you know, learn a little bit more about our, our history, um, you know, in that respect. So, moving on to, you know, this project, um, here at, on this slide, you'll have, uh, kind of a sense of what, you know, our, our submission, uh, looks like, it's around thirteen acres or so, and, and in this version of the design, we, you know, went to great lengths to try to minimize the amount of tree clearing, uh, recognizing that, um, you know, there's, there's value to having trees, uh, you know, both from a screening perspective and the wildlife perspective, uh, but also just to really just try to, you know, utilize the existing field, uh, and, and, you know, minimize the amount that we'd be changing the site, uh, to the greatest degree possible.
How much tree clearing are you gonna be doing?
There's not many trees on that property.
There's not?
No, I'm very familiar with that property.
Yeah. So part, part of the, uh.
You're gonna be planting more trees than you're gonna be cutting down.
Well, we're gonna be planting a good amount of trees, I don't know if it's more or.
Maybe more than you think.
But, um, well, with this design, it's probably, you know, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
I get, yeah, getting the message here, yeah. Well, yeah, no, happy to have that conversation. So, you know, in response to our, our discussion last night, um, you know, it was, it was pretty clear to us that people wanted to see greater distance uh, between their property lines and the northern part of the solar project, so if you look up at the northwest, you know, Rich, you can.
We, we, uh, we talked with the neighbors last night about.
There's a couple new houses right there, yeah.
Yeah, one here, one here, they were there, both couples were at the, the meeting last night, and they were concerned about the, the distance, we do meet the, the setbacks that are required right now, but, um, what we talked about last night, and we're actually in the process of doing that now, is, um, cutting this back.
How many get setback now, sir?
This is, uh, this is fifty feet, which is the side yard or rear yard setback under the bylaw. We're gonna be pulling that back to well over a hundred feet with the screening. And to offset losing some of this production here, we are gonna go into this area a little bit to, to make up the difference in that regard, and they, uh, we talked about that last night, and like I said, we're in the process of shifting things around a little bit right now. A plan, you know, revised plan set that shows that would, would be forthcoming, also addressing any comments from your engineer, and also, um, we did receive some comments from Todd, uh, today as well, from the Board of Health.
Yeah, I think probably what we're talking about it too, a couple other things that we, we heard last night, and, and are also acting on, um, the equipment pad that you see up there on the, by the driveway, we'll be moving deeper within the site, just to make sure it's abundantly clear that, you know, people don't see it, don't hear it, et cetera. You know, some, some folks had expressed an interest in, uh, privacy slats perhaps, in certain parts of the fencing, which is something that, you know, we, we could entertain. But, you know, on the other side of things, the, the screening that we're, we're also proposing, we think will also do a really good job, um, you know, above and beyond what you, what you typically see, but all said, we're, we're happy to, to entertain, um, you know, uh, creative, creative ways to make sure that people are, are satisfied and, and not seeing the project. One of the other things that we, so we met with the building inspector as well, probably around maybe five weeks ago.
Yeah.
And, you know, that was a good conversation, we talked about fire access, um, so that's why you see the cul-de-sac down there at the end. And we actually have a, I think in this, this design, it's a twelve-foot-wide, um, cart path or access path all the way around the site. But, um, the one in, in the middle will be, will have, you know, crushed gravel, just like you'd find in, you know, a little twenty-foot wide. Yeah.
Fire chief had to review that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, we, we did sit down with him preliminarily, and that's, this was the result.
Fire chief.
With the, of the initial discussions with him.
Correct. And then, uh, yeah, so some of the other, other things that we were thinking about doing as well, uh, was, was actually installing the visual screening first before building the project, just so it's clear that, you know, at least maybe during part of the construction, the, the visual impact is, is less than it would be, but also just to instill confidence that we're serious about making sure that, you know, we're doing it right, and, and that we're, we're living up to what we say that we're gonna do, so.
What are you planning on as a visual screening, what I'd wanted to do? Chinese chestnut trees.
So, among others, uh, so we hired a firm that does, so they, they do landscape design for farms, and one thing that they do is, so if you look at a farm, they'll have those windbreaks between fields, um, so, uh, we actually asked them to design a windbreak or an agricultural buffer for this project to make it look more natural, and also to provide some depth and, and actually, uh, uh, you know, help maybe fill in the gaps a little better than just a simple line of arborvitae.
Arborvitae.
So this is a combination of, uh, some, some, some junipers, um, which will probably grow to thirty to forty feet, I think they can get as high as sixty feet. And the benefit is that because those are on the north side, like, we don't care how tall they get, cause, right, sun shines in the south. So, you know, we're, we're happy to install trees that, that will, you know, really provide a, a, a good solid buffer. Uh, and then, um, you know, in front of that, um, in, in, um, some parts of the site, we've proposed, uh, just some wetland buffer shrubs, um, so on the northwest portion, just.
Yeah, put that back up there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So on, on the northwest portion, we've proposed placing some, some wetland buffer shrubs to provide just better ecological value and, and help just to, again, fill in whatever, uh, holes might be, uh, there on the low end, and, and also to help, you know, buffer against runoff into, into the, the wetlands as well. Uh, and then one, um, I thought creative recommendation, uh, you know, from this firm was, uh, to, to, to plant, um, hybrid poplar trees. So in the early year, you know, in, in, let's say years, you know, one and two and maybe three, the juniper trees might not be as, as tall as people would want to see, but poplar trees grow several feet a year.